Welcome, everyone. We're going to call this meeting of the Somerville City Council to order. In accordance with Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2023, this meeting of the city council may be conducted via remote participation. And please note that video and audio of this meeting is being recorded and may be shown live on local access government channels and on the City of Somerville website, and will be available for future review. Will the clerk please call the roll?
This is roll call. Counselor McGlaughlin.
Here.
Counselor Davis.
Here.
Counselor Scott.
Present.
Counselor Strezo.
Present.
Counselor Klingon.
Present.
Counselor Wilson.
Present.
Counselor Burnley.
Present.
Counselor Gomez-Moakad.
Present.
Counselor Kelly.
Present.
Counselor Pineda-Nufeld.
Present.
Counselor Ewan Campan.
Here.
With all counselors present, we have a quorum.
Full house. Thank you, clerk. Pursuant to Rule 32, let it be known that this city council salutes the flag of the United States of America and let us recall our oath to uphold the Constitution and the laws of the Commonwealth to the best of our abilities and understanding. We begin our meetings with a moment of silence. Are there counselors who wish to remember members of our community tonight? Seeing none, I have one. I was asked by Police Chief Femenow to remember the Department K-9. Somerville Police K-9 Lobo entered the police service with his handler Officer Timothy Sullivan on December 24, 2015. Upon entering into service, he was trained to track and locate missing persons, to search for suspects, and locate evidence. Lobo was also trained to detect bombs, bomb-making materials, and firearms. He proudly served the residents of Somerville for nearly eight years until his sudden passing on October 15, 2023. Lobo will be missed, and we ask that you keep Lobo and Officer Sullivan in your thoughts during this difficult time, on behalf of the city council. Everyone who is able, if you would please rise for a moment of silence. Thank you. May be seated. All right, colleagues, before we get to the agenda, I just want to let you know we're going to take four items out of order at the beginning of the meeting. The first, Counselor Gomez-Moakad has an item in relating to the compensation study, and we have speakers from our Municipal Employees Association here. After that, Counselor Burnley has an item number 4.9 in support of the SEIU 32BJ, one of their ongoing efforts. After that, we've been asked to approve tonight a new MOU for our crossing guards, and we have staff available to answer any questions on that. That's item number 7.3. And after that, 7.7, Elections Commissioner Salerno is here to ask for our approval of an elections-related item. And we will get to those as soon as we do our citations and public hearings. So will the clerk please call the next item?
We'll start with item 1.3, Approval of the Minutes of the Regular Meeting of September 28, 2023.
Seeing no discussion, that item is approved.
Item 2.1 is a citation by Counselor Burnley commending Ken Fields for his musical contributions to the arts and arts community.
Counselor Burnley.
Thank you, Chair. Through you, I'll be very quick. In Somerville, we've really been blessed to have a community that's overflowing with creativity and energy and warmth, through no small part because of the artists who live here and the artists that unfortunately are facing displacement and struggles to remain here for far too long. And so, in bringing forward this citation to Ken Fields, I'm really excited to just uplift someone who's been basically a superstar to our community, one of the founders of Honk, someone who's served on the organizing committee for 16, 17 years? 16 years, I want to say. Has lived in Somerville for 17 years. Someone who has worked on producing the music for Sesame Street, which is really exciting for me because, you know, that's where I get all my best news. And I think we have an opportunity to uplift more artists in this time, and I'd like to sponsor Joanne, who I believe is here, Johanne, I think is actually pronounced, online to speak a little bit more about Ken.
Excellent. Clerk Will, do you see them?
Hi, good evening, City Council. Thank you so much for taking this matter. Yes, I am the president of the Carnival Society of Boston. We are an arts commission to make sure that carnival arts, in regards to costuming and music and performative art, is kept alive. I know the local Caribbean carnival is having a little bit of a hard time, and we are here to propel that excuse me and make sure that, you know, our arts as people of color continue. And Mr. Ken has been a wonderful king. He was the king of the Boston Mardi Gras this year. We went from the tip of the Cape to the tip of the state, and it was a beautiful rain, beautiful year, and the arts have been a wonderful source. And I just want to commend him for that, and I hope the chambers would agree with that.
Excellent. Thank you so much for being here. Counselor Burnley.
Thank you. Ken is not here to accept this right now, but I'll deliver this to him, and I just think what a... We should always honor the folks who helped build the community that we love, and Honk is by far one of the most exciting events in our city, and everyone who helps put it on every year should get one of these. But glad to start with one of the founders. Thank you.
Here, here. That item is approved.
Item 3.1 is a grant of location from Comcast to install 20 feet of conduit in Beacon Street from utility pole 142 over 25 to a point of pickup at 205 Beacon Street.
I'll declare this public hearing open. Dave Fluelling.
Evening, Dave Fluelling, Comcast, 9 Forbes Road, Woven, Massachusetts. Would like to speak in favor of the Comcast petition to place 20 feet of conduit for the purpose of providing service to number 205 Beacon Street.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak on that? Chris Dwan.
Yes, I'm an immediate neighbor, and I'm wondering, is this the work that was done yesterday?
Mr. Fluelling, can you answer that?
We have not started any work there. It may have been one of the other utilities. Once, if and when this grant of location is approved, we will apply for the street opening permit, and then our work will proceed.
All right, because somebody did trench through the sidewalk in the spot shown on these diagrams yesterday.
Wasn't Comcast.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Dwan. Is there anyone else to speak on the public hearing?
No.
All right, we'll close the public hearing. I see Counselor Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. I can't believe we're talking about 205 Beacon again. But here we are. It's undeniable, somebody dug a trench through the sidewalk. It is roughly in the location that this grant of location would put the work. And I've tried talking to Director Postal Weight. What I would encourage right now is that this be sent to committee, but for the time being, I'm happy to have it laid on the table. Director Postal Weight of Engineering will let me know if there's anything to be found out about this. Maybe there's another permit, as the representative from Comcast said, but I'd just like to find out. So if we could lay this on the table for the meantime and then potentially refer it to committee at the end of the night? Thank you.
Very well. This item will be laid on the table, and maybe we'll have more information by the end of the meeting. Next item, please.
Excellent. And that will take us to the first item that we're going to take out of order, which is item 4.4, A Resolution by Counselors Gomez-Moakad, Klingon, Pineda-Nufeld, Ewan Campan, Burnley, Davis, Strezo, and Scott that the administration provide an update on the compensation study, including a definite delivery timeline at the November 9, 2023, meeting of this city council.
Counselor Gomez-Moakad.
I want to make two points. And first, I want to explain why this order is here. And I want the community to hear carefully because then I, the next thing I want to know is discuss, talk about the importance of our municipal workers. Because my mother always said, take care of those who take care of you. And that's exactly what our municipal workers do. So, we have to understand our municipal workers have not seen since 2021 an adjustment. They had one of 2% back then with a 1% step raise. Since then, we've seen increased inflation and the cost of living rate exceeding between 5% between 21 and 2023. So it's been since July 21, they've waited. As we wait, we have increased vacancies. We keep on hearing through all our departments, we can't fill these jobs. And we are outsourcing costing the city 1.5 to two times the wage rate of union jobs. And I want to talk a little bit now about the importance of having city staff and the importance they have. Without our city's municipal workers, we won't have an effective, we don't have the effective operation and maintenance of our city. We, when you outsource, workers change all the time. They don't know your city. And we're doing a lot of changes in the city. We're putting new bike lanes. We have to change posts. We are, we always have all sorts of events. Our roads change. We, you know, we wouldn't have someone at the clerk's office to take our dog's license permit. We, you know, so many things happen in the city day to day. They take care of our parks here late at night, taking care of our trash. Someone closes down this building every day and makes sure the lights are on for us. And when you outsource, and I've experienced this, and this is why this is extremely dear to me, the person taking care of the city doesn't take it with the heart and soul of those who truly work for the city and know it inside and out. And it seems insane to me as we're embarking in a lot of new capital projects, for example, and in all new services, and we do so much, that we don't have people who know our city, who know it well. These are also workers who often work 24/7. You know, we can't have people coming all the way to New Hampshire to respond to the needs of the city. We need people who live locally, and the cost of living is rising here. So with that being said, our municipal workers are indispensable. Our city will not succeed without them. And I think it is time, and they waited seven months, I'm sorry, in the middle of negotiations, and Mr. Halloran will explain it better than I will. They were told we had a compensation study, and seven months have elapsed. And I understand things take time. But our workers are, it's sending a poor message to our workers who do so much for us, to wait that time. And I think we need to focus and work with our workers to get, you know, proper raises and compensation because our city will collapse. Imagine if tomorrow you couldn't go to the clerk's office, you couldn't go to the library, the trash wasn't picked up on the parks, you know, the lights weren't changed on our streets. Think about, or we're having an event and there's no one to serve there. Imagine what would happen. So I would like to sponsor Mr. Halloran.
Mr. Halloran.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
That way you'll be able to hear me better. Thank you. So what I want to do is I want to kind of lay this out for everybody on what's going on and who I am. And there may be people who don't know who I am, and I apologize if I haven't been up here enough. But my name is Ed Halloran, and I've been working for the city for 30 years. I've been the president of this union for 16 years. And the Somerville Employees Association mean so much to me as a person. You just keep going on and going on, and they work incredibly hard. So what I'd like to do is I'd like to focus on my comments on the status of the contract negotiations and specifically about the crisis relating to compensation and the city's delay in completing a wage study that will identify market inequities in the wage rates paid by the city. As you know, the SMEA's compromise of 220 employees, it's about 31 divisions around the city. And we're a vital part of the system that keeps the city open for business, as you just stated. If you use city services, you will see us in the library when you check out the books or attend programs. Someone said to me, if you want to go to the library, it doesn't cost you a penny. You don't need any money to show up at the library. You will see us at traffic and parking when you get a permit or pay a ticket. City Hall when you need a business, a marriage license, a business license. We inspect your buildings. We clean and maintain your parks. We fill your potholes. And there's a lot of them out there. And your roads, your sidewalks, we cement, we flush your hide, and we ply your snow. And nobody can forget Snowmageddon of 2015, when we worked around the clock here. And we did a magnificent job. It was just incredible, the work that these people put out. And it's really a test of, you know, what you are and who you really are about, and how much you care about the city. We also have school nurses. I don't know, people may not know that. And we had, they have a contract, and we're so happy about that for them, and they deserve it. And it was a great negotiation with the Somerville School Department. And police, we have people in police and fire. We have some clericals over there. And we're also very proud to announce that we, we hope by November 1st at the Division Labor Day, we'll have the 311 constituent services as well. Unfortunately, we didn't want to have to go that far to do that. We would have just preferred to have an agreement to do it, but that's okay. We're here now. All these things are vital, and, you know, they are vital, and they barely capture the third of the departments of the city staff. So I'm not going to go on about that any longer. The SMEA bargaining agreements with the city expired on June 30, 2022. 16 months ago. The parties began negotiations for a new contract for the largest unit, which is Unit B, which you're seeing behind me right here, in the summer of 2022. But negotiations came to a halt six months ago. And why? Because the city wasn't able to make a proposal on wages that would be informed by knowledge of the market rates. Seven months and counting, and that wage study has still not been completed. We're waiting. Somerville employees are very upset. They're frustrated and starting to leave the city more and more. We lost one today on the grounds division. That's it. They leave. It's amazing. I've never seen anything quite like it in 30 years. So I want to give you an idea, just a couple of quick samples, okay? A special heavy equipment operator in the city of Somerville. They are really good at what they do with their craft. They have a CDL license, and they also operate the front-end loaders and the backhoes that you see. So we did a little pay comparison through our attorneys that we had. One of the most prevalent positions in the city, these workers are paid about 25% less than the DPW workers of Cambridge. Right next door, and the top step here is 54205. And the top step in Cambridge is 68229. Okay? We want to be Cambridge. Well, we're not, we're not even close to being Cambridge. I say that jokingly because people always talk about that. The other is the librarians. These are the two samples that we brought in because these are the ones that we have gotten. A librarian, too, is a position that requires a master's degree, which is a library science MLS. In Somerville, they're paid about one-third less than the librarians of similar title in Arlington, Belmont, Brookline, and Waltham. The highest step here is 54,875. And the highest step in those communities, about 20, they're probably about $20,000 higher, at 73,075. Waltham is one of them, okay? And we've lost some tremendous librarians, by the way. It's really painful to see this. So I often say things about positions that are like poverty positions, you know, like really low-paid jobs. And I'm going to tell you, a parking control officer makes $46,977. Senior clerk over traffic and parking, they deal with a lot over there, I can tell you now, $44,473. Principal clerk, traffic and parking around the city, $48,570. A librarian, $1,52468. Heavy motor equipment operator, which is a CDL driver that drives these 10 wheels, these dump trucks, they make $46,977 a year. And an HBO maintenance mechanic, $910 a week, $47,000 a year. A public works labor, so now if we're talking about hiring laborers, because I know people think that's the starting, we'll start someplace, right? Let's have some laborers in here. Sadly, it's $44,479, okay? We just talked about the SHMO, $49,000 a year to start. A tech 2 circulation librarian, $47,000. A master electrician, right? Somebody told me they're making $81,000 somewhere else in another municipality. I can't say that's positively true. But, you know, $1,150 for a master plumber and a master electrician just doesn't cut it here. Nobody wants these jobs. I just talked to, I just talked to Ellen. Thank you. I just, I just had a conversation with Ellen, with Ellen Collins, Deputy Director, and I told her, I said, "Our goal is to make your job easier." That's our goal. Because that's what we want. We want to hire people. A carpenter, $53,000, which is $10,30 a week. So what happens is the jobs come to me, the president of the union, I initial them, so we can send them out to post. As of October 23rd, 90 jobs have come to the union. 90. That's a lot of positions to come to us. And we cross-reference them. We make sure that they're good and what we need. So at the DPW, the average worker must work approximately 10 extra weeks per year in order to earn what higher-paid municipal workers earn in just 52 weeks. So over the past four years, we've seen many of our coworkers leave the city for better-paying jobs, particularly in the utility sector over there as well. Others hold additional part-time jobs, and someone I talked to downstairs was working at a supermarket 25 hours a week, making the same money she's making right over here. So what I'm saying basically is that if these people can get their overtime, they're going to get the overtime, and they're going to take whatever they can get, and then they're going to work another 10 to 12 weeks more than someone's working over in Cambridge. So there are over 40 vacant positions in the city right now. 40. That's because the rates are so low in the city. The city can't recruit, they can't retain, and people, as people leave for jobs, they're not getting those fair regular wages. So 14 vacant sewer positions. And you knew I was going to get to this, right? So let's talk about that, please. The city has said it aspires to have a water and sewer department that would have a staff of employees that could service the city. But because wages are so low, those workers are long gone. The department has no staff, except for maybe, I think, the unit 8 person and someone who's a meter reader. And I think we've got maybe one catch basin cleaner and one unit 8 person, and that's it. And for the past two years, the city has opened postings for 14 positions that they couldn't fill. And we all know that would happen up here on June 22nd, right? So because of that, the majority of, which I'm sorry to say, the majority of you voted to outsource all of these, all their positions that was related. Granted, they were vacant, we understand that. But, you know, they're outsourced, and it's very hurtful when we see that, and then we see other things. So adding insult to injury, the city frequently contracts union work to private companies with prevailing wage premium required by state law, which is twice, at least twice, as much as they pay SMEA workers. And that's a lot of money. For instance, on June 22nd, at this city council budget cut night, in which the city admits that they must outsource, or it was at least, there were people up here who were saying that they couldn't fill the jobs, admittedly, they wanted it outsourced, right? And they wanted to move some money around. Sewer work related to rate increases because SMEA pays so low and difficult to fill. I think we had a couple supervisors that were talking about that. I apologize for not being here for that. I should have been here for that, okay? You have my apologies. As City Council Scott noted during the session, he stated that the following pertaining to the outsourcing, besides cheating SMEA workers to fear to negotiate fair wages, passes the cost on to the taxpayers. The 2009 financial crisis led to Mayor Curtis Tony to slash the budget every year for four years, and we all, we took some serious layoffs in those four years here. Members during that, for our members during that time, including the library, and I had a conversation about that. So that led to nearly seven years without a contract for the SMEA. Without a contract, no pay raise, zero, nothing, because of this financial crisis. When the union was finally able to get a contract, many of our members ended up losing four of those years. Those were zeros. And the mayor refused to give us those zeros while other communities were getting something, whether it be 1% or whether it be 2%, at least a minimal raise, and that has put us so far behind. I'm almost done. All right? The wage study delay represents the latest insult in a long history of anti-union actions by the city toward its unionized employees. Although its current administration talks progressive policies and values, its actions reflect a legacy of the systemic anti-union attitude that was enthusiastically cultivated by the previous administration for nearly 20 years. At the DPW, there are two large banners that hang every day that you can see them, okay? Somerville leads the way for you to live, work, and play. That's very difficult for us to look at every day. On behalf of the SMEA workers, I strongly urge the mayor and her administration to release the pay study so we can move forward with the contract negotiations. Let's work together to bring the same quality of life to union workers and as we see our counterparts in other municipalities. In closing, I respectfully ask that each and every city counselor and citizens that are watching and listening tonight to the City of Somerville become active, not just about the causes that help the environment, important issues of social justice, climate change, or other important causes, but also become active about the cause that's right in front of you tonight, right now. A workforce that you employ that is subject to a pay injustice and equity that needs to be resolved immediately. I want to thank you for this time, for waddling me this time on behalf of the SMEA workers, one of the greatest workforces and people that I've worked with in the city. I can tell you that right now. And they have a struggle, and I really appreciate your patience and listening to me. And we really want to make Somerville a union town. We truly want that. And we want you guys to lead the way. We thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Halloran. Are there other members that wanted to speak tonight?
Yeah. I would like to sponsor Meg Ragland, representing the library.
Hi, everyone. My name is Meg Ragland. I work at the Central Library as the head of the Technical Services Department. And next month, we'll start my seventh year. Thank you. My seventh year of service with the city. I'm both a union rep and the collective bargaining representative for the library. And I've lived in Ward 3 on Prospect Hill for most of the last 23 years. So hello. Thank you to the city council for having us speak tonight. I just want to tell you about an ongoing equipment repair request from my department that relates to the city's inability to fill vacant union positions due to the non-competitive union pay we offer in Somerville and to illustrate why we need the city to move forward with its wage study. When I started in my present position at the library about two and a half years ago, it has offices in the Central Library basement. And I was confronted with a broken dehumidifier that had apparently been out of service for some time, judging by the state of the walls in the surrounding area, the windowsill. It's all just deteriorating, peeling wall. And the humidity in the basement gets very, very high in the summer and fall months, 80% or higher. And we're a paper-based environment. Our printers emit steam when they print. The paper jams. Stickers don't stick. Paper curls. Mold grows, and it's a problem. So library administration put in a 311 to have this dehumidifier repaired in August, well, August 11, 2021. The work order was closed nine months later on May 6, 2022, with no detectable repairs, no explanation offered. My staff and I worked through another humid summer in 2022, and mold started to grow. So since I couldn't seem to get any traction with 311 or repeated complaints and because the uncontrolled humidity was becoming a health and safety issue at this point, I raised the issue in contract negotiations and formulated a contract proposal to make this repair along with numerous other safety-related repairs or renovations needed at the library. And some of you may have walked through and seen it. It's not pretty. I also requested that the city form a joint SMEA city safety committee for the purpose of enhancing safe working conditions. As specified in our present contract, it was specified in 2010. It met for the first time in April of 2023. In September, I attended a safety committee meeting with the human resources staff who were running it. In conversation with them about the status of the dehumidifier situation, I learned that part of the reason it's not moving forward is because there are no plumbers on staff in the city now to handle such a work order, because all those positions are vacant. The HR staffer who handles job posting inquiries told me that when he responds to inquiries about plumber job postings, callers lose interest when they learn how low the pay is. I then asked why the city hadn't contracted the job, and I jokingly said, "I know a plumber," thinking of the guy we use at home, and they said, "Oh, does he have a journeyman's license?" That was an unexpected answer. I was dismayed, but not surprised to hear that we have zero plumbers on staff due to non-competitive wages, but ready to accept the reality that the work might have to be contracted out. I hope that using contractors isn't going to be a long-term solution. This is union work that should be performed by SMEA workers. To echo what Ed said, I urge the mayor and her administration to release the pay study so we can move forward with contract negotiations, bring our pay to a competitive level, and hire an adequate workforce to perform the many needed repairs and renovations in Somerville. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
My name is Stephanie Estrella. I am an SMEA secretary. I have been employed with the city of Somerville for fourteen years, and I am currently an housing inspector in inspectional services. I have been a resident for the city for forty years. My family has owned our property for seventy years. As a homeowner, a parent of children in the public sewer system, the substantial increase in our taxes, water bill, and other necessities every year is making it extremely difficult for me and others to make ends meet. Personally speaking, if we didn't have a family home in the city, we wouldn't be able to stay or live here, especially with what we are being paid. Sorry, I lost my thought. We are being underpaid for many years now, and our union, SMEA, have been without a contract for sixteen months, which is unacceptable. We feel disrespected daily on our current salaries, especially given what some employees have earned in license certifications as well as our workloads. We haven't received a raise in years, and now the city is outsourcing for our union jobs and paying them prevailing wages or even higher. Why can't the SMEA employees be paid their worth? Thank you.
Thank you. I know a number of councillors want to speak. Councillor Clingon.
Thank you, Mr. President, through you. Proud member of Naish Local 282. I'm on the bargaining committee as we speak with the governor's office. So you're preaching to the choir here. And the reason I even bring up the fact that I'm on that committee is because, you know, what the governor did was recognize just how far behind state workers got, and basically we negotiated through our fighting a nine percent increase for a one-year contract. So that's just to shore us up from inflation. And then now we're in current negotiations for the next three-year contract. So when we're talking about this wage study, you know, first of all, I don't know if maybe we need a study, like, done outside of the mayor's office, or, you know, like, if the union can pay for their own study, or if the city council through the clerk can commission a study. But we're talking about two different things here. We're talking about a compensation study, then we're talking about raises. The compensation study is just going to bring us to hopefully be competitive with the cities around us. Never mind all the ground that's been lost. So I feel, you know, the compensation study is so far behind that, once that money, once those positions become reassessed and brought up to the proper pay scale, at that point, then there should be a reflection of this, you know, the federal government giving nine percent. Many, many people are recognizing this nine percent increase cost of living just because just how bad inflation was. So you stack all it up, and, you know, you can see how much our Somerville workforce is struggling. And these are people that I know that have done many events, and they're breaking down at eleven o'clock at night. And actually, my niece was one of the librarians at the central office, and she ended up leaving to go to a private situation. So, and she's from a proud union family who, you know, she really didn't want to have to leave the city, but unfortunately, she did. So that said, I just, you know, I really hope, again, for me preaching to the choir, I hope people at home are listening, because we get a lot of constituent complaints, and a lot of people, we have to continually repeat that we have a serious labor shortage in the region, but more importantly, in the city, our retention is really, really bad, and our recruitment is bad because of the low wages that have been demonstrated here tonight. So, you know, this comes as no surprise to me, but I really hope that we can get these workers what they deserve once and for all, you know, bring us up to, I see the mayor's getting a lot of union endorsements, and I hear, you know, and again, I know that it's been said many times at Somerville, you know, we'd like to be a union town, and that starts right here at home with these workers here. So I support them. So I stand with you all, and I always will, and so thank you for everything that you do. Appreciate it.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor McLaughlin, I believe the entire council would like to sign on to this. Councillor Scott, you wish to speak?
Well, thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to these members for being here. You know, my colleagues, I ask your forbearance for a moment here, because you have been listening to me complain about this problem for six full years. You listened to me for a very long time in June on cut night, talking about this specific problem. And just as a reminder, the outsourcing costs are five times what it would take to pay the salaries in the water and sewer department. We could double the salaries of all of those positions in the water sewer department and still save the taxpayers money. That was true six months ago. It is true now. It has been true for several years. So I'm frustrated. I share the frustration with these union members. You may recall similar fights about the library. Mr. President, the need to maintain our city is something that is corrosive. The lack of maintenance of our city is corrosive to the spirit of the people that live here now, when we do not support our union workers, when we do not maintain the city for the people who live here now. But you see a gleaming Union Square Plaza that's just been built by a massive corporation, and there's a giant ribbon-cutting celebration for it. The message is clear that this city does not care about its current residents. This city is being built for the people to come. So I, I'm at a loss, Mr. President. I'm at a loss, because we have called for increases. I have personally tried to reject spending. I personally tried to reject the water and sewer increase. I implored my colleagues to join me on that fight. I don't know of any way the city council can apply more leverage, except for the one power that we have to approve appropriations of the mayor, including the annual budget. I voted against our annual budget, and this is a big part of why. So I'm not sure what else can be done. I'm glad you're going to receive these kind of warm words tonight, but frankly, we don't need. I appreciate the order, and I wholeheartedly agree that we need a timeline for when this study is going to be done. But we don't need a study to know just how bad things are. We don't need a study to know that even a temporary uplift, a one-year uplift, to acknowledge the reality that every other worker in the Commonwealth is facing, much less the lag behind that these folks have had because their contract is so far out and because it was in a bad place to start with. You know, I want to thank, I think it was Ms. Estrella who talked about the difficulty in staying here, and, you know, I believe we have to do this for two giant reasons, one of which is that nobody knows the city, and nobody will take care of the city better than the people who live here. And when we contract and outsource this work, we are just flooding the taxpayer money out of the city, as opposed to putting it back in these residents' pockets through living wages, through fair wages. And secondly, it is offensive, frankly, to talk about a future, the community we're building, the community support. And, you know, I appreciate the words, and I appreciate my colleagues who have passed ordinances to make this city a more welcoming place for all our residents. But if you have a place where you have to import labor to maintain it, you have to import labor to clean it, to repair the infrastructure, then you're not building a community, you are building a theme park. And I don't want to live in a theme park. I think our city deserves better than that. So thank you, Mr. President. Thank you to you members. I will continue the fight, and I hope that we will answer the call as a city council. Thank you.
All right, colleagues. Before we take a quick recess, you know, I just want to say, I think for a lot of residents, this might sound complicated. You know, we just heard a list of all these salaries, there's a compensation study. Let's try to simplify what's going on here. The wages are negotiated between the union and the mayor's office. In this case, that process hasn't even begun yet, because the mayor's office is waiting to complete what they call a wage compensation study. All of us are waiting for this document. I would have never in my wildest dreams thought that this would have taken more than a couple months. That was over the summer. At that point, we were already pissed off about this, and now we are months and months later, there is, there are no words. This is, it's an embarrassment to be here tonight, to be honest with you, for us to be sitting here, not even having meaningfully begun those negotiations. So, you know, I agree. We're all here to, like, say words in support and, you know, to take whatever actions we can, but it is just incredibly frustrating that it's got to this point, and so I want to apologize to all of you and to thank you. You know, I've always, you know, walking around the city, you see public workers. For myself, I now see it through the eyes of a three-year-old. We're just constantly, we're at the library, we're at playgrounds, we're watching the trash trucks go around cleaning up the playgrounds. I was outside tonight, watching, you know, the DPW trucks turned into a monster. It is just, it's indescribable how much you guys do for the city, all of you. So thank you. I see a hand.
Courtney O'Keefe, can you say something?
Please.
She was, she's from traffic library, and she just got off work, and she got stuck on the house truck.
Of course. Welcome, Ms. O'Keefe.
Good evening, everyone. It's so nice to be in the city council chambers. I've never been here before. My name is Courtney O'Keefe. I am a forty-three-year resident of the city of Somerville. I've spent my entire life inside the city, and I now get to brag about the fact that I am an employee of this city. I am window number four. I've been working there since February. I'm a clerk. I help people moving into the city. I help people coming over from a brand-new state over to this city to build a home and build a life. I don't do this alone. I have an exceptional team behind me, a team that works behind the scenes for those beautiful summer streets that we have, that are set up properly and make sure that no cars interrupt it. Those are the people that do that. Those are the people that keep your parks clean. Those are the people that keep our sidewalks nice and fixed and our trees beautiful. Right now, I'm preaching to the choir, and I know that, but I know directly who I have to speak to. And I know we can go through compensation studies, but the one mantra that I've always lived by is that those who are closest to the problem are closest to the solution. Why we have to hire consultants to show them our absolutely laughable pay grades is a complete waste of money. You could have just come to the Mount Vernon one night, got a free dinner, and I would have bought you the first round. And you would have learned how all of us, every single one of us, struggle, and I mean struggle to pay our bills, struggle to pay our rent, struggle to stay inside of this city. All the administration had to do was sit down and have a conversation with one of us. And that's all I'm asking the administration to do. It's not about studies, it's not about fancy terms, it's about doing the right thing, and the right thing to do is to pay your workers what they are worth and pay them for how proud they are to do their jobs and how proud they are to do it for the city of Somerville. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak.
I just want to ask the mayor to do what my mother always told me, and it's take care of those who take care of you. It is time.
Thank you. All right. Colleagues, we're going to get started. All right, we'll call this meeting back to order. 32BJ in the House, welcome. Our next item, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. The next item that we're going to take out of order is item six.
4.9.
Oh, we're going to do 4.9. Okay, is item 4.9 a resolution by Counselor Burnley in support of the Service Employees International Union Local 32BJ's Cleaning Contract Campaign?
Counselor Burnley.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. President. I'm really grateful, as our SMEA workers and colleagues are leaving, that they started this meeting out by reminding of our responsibility to stand with workers. And I'd just like to continue that thread tonight by just making the pitch that it's not only on this body to stand with municipal workers, although we absolutely should and need to. Any worker in our city that is struggling, that is working to have better working conditions and fair wages, our city should be uplifting, celebrating, and standing behind, in arm-in-arm width. And as a number of my colleagues have said previously, that's for all workers, including those who are often invisibilized, who are the people cleaning our buildings. In Greater Boston, SEIU 32BJ's workers, the janitorial workers, clean and maintain over 200 million square feet of offices a year. And as we, as a city, expand life science buildings and increase development all over, we know that these workers are increasingly working in Somerville, and that some of these workers live in Somerville. And as they work to get a fair contract, because their contract is expiring November 15th, in basically three weeks, we know that we need to be with them if they struggle. And if these building owners across Greater Boston and across New England, where the 12,000 of them work, we're going to need to be standing right alongside them as they enter that fight. And so, I just want us to stand united on this, and I'd love to hear from, let me just get this right, I don't want to say anybody's name wrong, Roxanne Rivera, who is the Assistant to the President of 32BJ, SEIU, and the third in line nationally for SEIU. So, thank you.
All right.
Welcome.
Thank you, thank you, Counselor Burnley. So, yes, as Counselor Burnley said, my name is Roxanne Rivera, and I'm Assistant to the President of 32BJ, it's of the Service Employees International Union. We represent 20,000 property service workers in Massachusetts. I do want to thank Counselor Burnley for introducing a resolution today in support of our janitorial contract campaign. Our master collective bargaining agreement covering 12,000 commercial janitors in Massachusetts does expire, yes, in three weeks. The contracted janitors under this agreement clean throughout Massachusetts' commercial office space, biotech, higher education, airport terminals, and MBTA stations. These workers, for Somerville, some of the well-known sites here in Somerville, Somerville is the Mass General Brigham Corporate Offices, the Cambridge Health Alliance Exemblé, as well as the Thermo Fisher Scientific, Middlesex Savings Bank, and Somerville High School. These workers and their families took huge risks to their personal safety and health throughout the pandemic to keep our economy running and to keep the public safe, given they clean. And on top of this, janitors also took steps backwards economically due to the hit of inflation on working families. So, this is why janitors are asking for strong wage increases, and in our industry, more opportunities for full-time work. Many janitors still struggle working part-time in the contracted cleaning industry without a path to employer-paid health care. Janitors will be conducting a strike vote this Saturday, in the hopes of sending a strong message to contractors, building owners, and clients about the importance of making strong improvements in this contract for working families in Massachusetts. We thank you all for your past support as a body of members of 32BJ, especially at the university nearby, Tufts University, which is a separate agreement from the one that we are asking for your support today. But we thank you for that past support. And we also thank you for your consideration in supporting this resolution today. Thank you.
Thank you. I know the whole council would like to sign on. Counselor Burnley.
On this point, just before my colleagues weigh in, I'd like to also recognize another worker and Somerville resident, Ada, to speak on this as well. Please.
Buenas noches.
Buenas.
Good evening.
Es un placer estar otra vez más en este lugar porque yo lo he visitado por 20 años cuando vengo a pagar los impuestos de mis carros.
It's a privilege to be here in this building, after visiting it from time to time over the last 20 years, to pay the taxes for my vehicle.
Mi nombre es Adam Mena. Soy trabajadora de limpieza en un centro comercial en Burlington. Pero vivo acá, soy residente de Somerville, Massachusetts desde hace 20 años.
My name is Anna Mena, and I'm a worker, cleaner, in Burlington, and I've been a resident of Somerville for 20 years.
Tengo una hija. Ella asiste a Somerville High School.
I have a daughter who attends Somerville High School.
Estoy aquí para pedir su apoyo a nuestra resolución. Al igual que yo, tenemos muchos miembros que viven y trabajan en Somerville.
So, I'm here to ask for your support to our resolution. Like myself, we have many members who live and work in Somerville, who have been affected very much by the pandemic.
Que se vieron muy afectados por la pandemia. Necesitamos su ayuda para garantizar que los propietarios de edificios y los clientes que suscontratan su limpieza entiendan que tienen un papel fundamental en la defensa de los buenos trabajos para trabajadores de limpieza.
So, we need your help to guarantee that these building owners, that their clients and subcontractors, subcontracting cleaners, understand that they have an important role to play in defense of good jobs for us workers, cleaners.
Hicimos el trabajo que se nos pidió que hiciéramos durante la pandemia, aunque no estábamos seguros de lo que nos pasaría a nosotros o a nuestra familia al ir al trabajo.
So, we did the hard work. We did what was asked of us during the pandemic, without knowing what risks we were taking, or without knowing what risks we were bringing home for ourselves or for our families.
Ayudamos a mantener los espacios desinfectados y seguros para los demás.
We were able to make sure that workplaces were disinfected and clean for everyone else.
Pero tenemos que asegurarnos de que podemos seguir cuidando de nuestra familia en los próximos años.
In return, we need to assure the ability to care for our own families now, now and in the years to come.
Es por eso que estamos pidiendo a nuestros empleadores mejoras en el próximo contrato.
And that's why we're asking for better conditions in our next contract.
Les agradecemos su consideración al apoyar la resolución que tienen hoy ante ustedes.
So, we appreciate your consideration in advance for this resolution that's in front of you today.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you. Counselor Kelly? No. Counselor Gomez-Moakad, and then Klingon.
Adam, gracias por tus palabras, y quiero decirte que entiendo lo importante que son ustedes en nuestros edificios todos los días manteniendo la limpieza, y sé que durante la pandemia fue muy difícil para ustedes. Una sala de operaciones no puede funcionar sin las personas que limpian esa sala de operaciones, y nuestra industria farmacéutica no podría sobrevivir sin ustedes creando vacunas para nosotros. Así que gracias, la labor que ustedes hacen. Quiero saber que sepan que es extremadamente importante, y ustedes se merecen la compensación y el respeto de nuestra comunidad.
I'll quickly. I just wanted to thank her and recognize the value that they bring every day to many of our industries. Our operating rooms wouldn't function without someone to clean them. Our labs wouldn't be creating new vaccines without, again, them cleaning them. So, they're an important part of this. So, I want to thank them, and I want to take a moment to, something that really caught me a few, like a year ago, there was an article in The Globe about janitorial workers who travel very far to get to their jobs, but their jobs are part-time. And this particular woman in this article was working for a pharmaceutical. And they said, she works part-time, so they don't have to pay her health care. And it just threw me that a pharmaceutical is trying to cut back on health care costs. That is unconscionable. And they have many researchers with post-docs there that get paid a good salary. There are people in this community who can live out of one salary because of that industry. And we have janitorial workers, I know one where I work, and I'm treading here in a borderline, who goes from his job in Longwood Medical Area to go work in Cambridge to clean, two jobs. Like, he starts his day at 6:00 a.m. and doesn't end until 11:00 or 12:00. So, thank you. Muchísimas gracias por todo lo que hacen desde el fondo de mi corazón.
Counselor Klingon.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you, again, naturally, I support the plight of these workers. I actually just had two clarifying questions for the good Vice President, if you wouldn't mind. So, just so the folks at home understand, and I understand better, so this is like a master contract that covers, like, who is at the other side of that table?
Actually, there's an association of contractors. About 60 different contractors that basically are signatories to the same agreement. So, we directly negotiate with the contractors, with their association. But again, we do a lot of advocacy to the building owners and clients, because those contractors can't support any improvements without getting the support of the building owners and clients, because that'll affect the pricing for those institutions.
Understood completely. All right, thank you very much. I appreciate that. And I wish you the best in your plight. I know a strike vote is not something that's easy. That's something that's going to take serious consideration on y'all's part. And if and when you need my support, I'll be there. So, I just want to thank you all for coming up, and good luck with everything. Thank you.
Thank you all. And this is neither here nor there, but the folks at home can't see your shirts, which are some of the most incredible union swag I have ever seen. I'm partial to the sequins, but... Well, thank you all so much for being here, and good luck. We all have your back. No, let's go to 73 and then 77, please. No, let's go to 7.3 and then 7.7, please.
So the next item that we'll take out of order is item 7.3, a request of the mayor requesting approval of a... Excuse me. Do I have that right? Yes. Requesting approval of a transfer of $52,403 from the salary contingency account to police personal services to fund a collective bargaining settlement with local 888 crossing guards.
I see some staff here. Director Mastroboni, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mike Mastroboni, budget director for the city of Somerville. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on this item, specifically the financial aspects of what is being asked of the council tonight for appropriation. What this includes is the funding to make employees whole for this fiscal year-to-date and supplement the budget to cover this agreement through the end of the year with the crossing guards union. A couple of quick points to reference. This increases the hourly wages to $24 an hour. It supplies high-visibility ring coat and footwear stipends for those employees, as well as, I think, what's really important is the creation of a sick leave benefit for these staff. This contract, this memorandum of agreement, extends the contract through June 30, 2026. And it's attached to the item if anyone has any questions or wants further reading. Happy to answer any questions. We also have staff from the city solicitor's office, as well as human resources here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions? Counselor Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to Director Mastroboni. Thanks for being with us tonight. So just to clarify, this $52,000 is going to cover all of the crossing guard salaries difference for this fiscal year? Just clarify this exact number again.
Sure. Through you, Mr. President. This covers the variance between what was budgeted and what the new rate will be for wages already paid and in addition to how much money we believe we will need for the end of the year.
Thank you for that. And through the president to you. Do you have any idea how many vacancies still exist within the crossing guards?
Mr. President, I don't know that. I think we've typically tried to hire as many as we can up until their full. But there's a number of vacancies at this time, but I know we've hired a few recently, which is great news.
I don't have any further questions. This number is so small. I think it's troubling, quite frankly. When we see public sector contract negotiations, normally we're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars of increases. And so I hope that the number that we see in the FY '25 budget is bigger and represents the crossing guards getting paid a more livable wage. But I think this just goes to the issues we've been hearing about all throughout this evening, that the public sector workers here in Somerville are not being paid their fair wage. So I'm really glad that these folks are going to get paid their due this time around, but got to do better moving forward.
Thank you. Counselor Klingon, then Wilson.
Through you, Mr. President. So, through you, Mr. Mastroboni. You mentioned the rate they're making now is $24. What were they making per hour? I just can't remember.
Through you, Mr. President. The new rate is $24 an hour. The previous rate was about $20 and 1/4. The way that this was developed was through looking at neighboring communities, what they're paying, places like Carlington, Cambridge, and working through that with the union.
Okay, great. Yeah, I mean, you know, $4 is something. But, and I know how hard we've had in our committee talked about the recruitment that the HR department, that the folks down there are doing. They were able to get six, you know, six new crossing guards. So hopefully this helps bring in some more. I tend to, you know, to think that, you know... I think we could have gone a little higher, but I'm certainly happy to support this change if the union's okay with it. And you said also some equipment, right, to get besides the raise?
Mr. President, yes, so a footwear stipend, which is new, and high-visibility, sort of thicker ring coats. So we're procuring those now to give to the staff.
Okay, thank you. No more questions.
Counselor Wilson.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. President. I was surprised to find out we were taking up this item tonight when I spoke to our clerk before the meeting, but I'll get over that surprise to get behind doing something right for our crossing guards. Thanks.
Counselor Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just, I had a question for clarification. Did I hear it said that this was a 20% raise based on comparison with wages in other communities? To make sure we can take care... Is that what I heard?
Director.
Mr. President, through you, yeah. We came to this agreement through looking at comparable communities. It's a process that we feel is consistent with the way we're approaching other negotiations at this time.
Without a compensation study? Let's get Eddie Halloran back in the room. Jeez. Okay, thanks. I love that for our union employees here. I guess I just had one question about the new contract, or the new MOA. It looks like some language about dues deduction has changed here, and I just want to make sure I'm understanding that very clearly. Is there anybody who can speak to that language?
Hello, everyone. Matt Saragou from the solicitor's office, the fairly new labor council. It's a pleasure to meet you all.
Welcome.
Welcome aboard.
So yes, that new language is fairly standard language that we incorporate into all of our contracts post-JANUS, the Supreme Court's decision on voluntary versus involuntary fees collections. It's fairly standardized. It just represents the latest case law on the collection of union dues.
Okay. And just for folks at home who might be a little bit confused about that, right? Previously, everybody who was a member in good standing in the union who was employed, they had their dues deducted by the city, and it was remitted to the union within a certain time period. And then anybody who was employed in the same position, who for some reason had elected not to, there would be a service fee deducted. Basically, the dues would come out one way or another, right?
Correct.
And so how has that changed now?
You have the opportunity to submit a form that would allow you to withdraw, have, no longer have that fee collected from you. You still largely get representation in that instance, but...
So it's basically allowing people to opt out of the union clause?
Yes, it's an opt-out process.
All right. Sir, it's the state of our world, unfortunately. I can't fix that. But no, I'm glad for the clarification on how this works. Thank you very much. Happy to get, happy to get an extra $4 an hour, $3.75 an hour for our crossing guards. And I know Ms. Sugar is excited about this down at the corner of Everett and Webster. All right, thank you.
All right, thank you all. Counselor Penita Neufeld.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you, I know this is not a new or amended section, but I've been reading through this. And I do sit on the committee that's been talking extensively about crossing guard recruitment. It's something I dream about because of the number of intersections that are unstaffed that I see every day, our kids crossing over. I will not go on that TED Talk at this moment, but I have in the past. However, in the sick leave section, a crossing guard has to be working for six months in order to qualify. And in the age of COVID and many, many other serious illnesses, the flu is getting worse and scarier and much harder for people to get over, RSV, moving through communities, have a baby in daycare, we have hand, foot, and mouth running through, right? I'm not sure why we would want to ask someone to work with a highly contagious disease around our youth if they haven't been working for six months and they need this money to pay rent and put food on the table. And I understand this, we're taking this up tonight, and this isn't a committee meeting where we get to have a full discussion. I just wanted to voice my displeasure at this sick leave policy that does not take into account the reality of our workers' lives.
Any comment on that?
I would just say that that's generally incorporated for purposes of a standard probationary period, but your concerns are heard.
All right. Seeing no further discussion, this item is approved. And congratulations to the crossing guards for signing this contract, and to the administration for that matter. Next item, please.
And the next item we'll take out of order is item 7.7, a request of the mayor requesting approval for specified city employees to work the November 7, 2023 city election.
This is an item that Commissioner Salerno asked us to take up tonight because we don't have a meeting before the election. It just permits city employees to work at poll locations. Are there any questions on the item? Seeing none, this item is approved. And... Did you want to talk to us? You can. Okay. Thank you. Before we move on, I'd like to waive the readings to take the license and permits committee report out just because we have members of the public here for that. So that is...
That is item 6D, a report of the committee on licenses and permits, meeting on October 18, 2023.
Counselor Burnley.
Thank you. And through the chair, I just... I'll try to get through this briefly. We had a very substantive meeting. We spoke about several items, including... We tried to hear from DeWire Family Trust for the third or fourth time. They did not show up. We have voted to not support their license, given that they have seemingly disappeared off of the legal map. We approved several items, including, with a split vote, an extension to the hours of Dumpling Garden, which currently does not exist. But is, will be coming up to the Foss Park neighborhood, the bottom of Winter Hill. And we did have a two-to-one vote on that. I'm happy to, not sponsor my colleague, but allow my colleague to speak on that if he would like to. But primarily, the hot-button discussion that we had was around Quick Auto Center, a new garage license around that. We had received information that there was towing that happened in the city that was illegal because a license had not been given. We were told that there was not the proper communication with Somerville Police Department as statutorily mandated. That seems to not be the case. Based on our most recent conversation with one of our assistant city solicitors, the communications to SPD happened. Tow companies apparently can operate across the entire Commonwealth when they are licensed with the Commonwealth. And we are, given the volume of incidents, over 102 weeks span, and over the course of a couple of months, nearly 400. We... I would like to sever this item and bring it back to committee because I think there are still conversations to be had, some fact-fighting to be done. But with the exception of 6D5, I would ask that this report be submitted and approved.
Excellent. So on the motion to sever 231339, is that a roll call? Okay. Is there discussion on severing that item? Seeing none, that item is severed and referred back to the license and permits committee. Thank you, Counselor Burnley. And the rest of the report is approved. Thank you. Next item, please.
That will return us to the regular order of business, and item 4.1, a resolution by Counselor Strezzo that the Somerville City Council supports the passage of House 1255, an act requiring menstrual products in buildings on public higher education campuses; House 3018, an act requiring menstrual products in all state buildings; and Senate 2481, an act to increase access to disposable menstrual products.
Counselors Penita Neufeld, Klingon, myself would like to sign on. Counselor Strezzo.
Thank you. Good news had passed at this state house. So I come with great news. But this is an incredibly vital and understated issue. When we talk about menstrual products for women and all who menstruate, it's, what we need to do is end-period poverty. We're tackling economic inequality by doing so, by making menstrual products available in all schools throughout the Commonwealth, all homeless shelters, prisons, or county jails. This is just a necessity because half the world menstruates. Can we, I would say we could send it to the state delegation, perhaps with gratitude that it passed. The lead sponsor was Senator Jalen, but we have to acknowledge these wins. Thank you.
Great news. That item is approved.
Item 4.2 is an order by Counselor Gomez-Moakad that the Director of Infrastructure and Asset Management and the Director of Finance explain to this council the steps and processes in the school building master plan for a ballot vote on Proposition 2.5 in reference to funding a school building project.
That item is approved with a copy to school building, the school building committee.
Item 4.3 is an order by Counselor Gomez-Moakad that the Director of Planning, Preservation, and Zoning conduct an historic demolition review to identify buildings over 75 years old, to determine structures that could potentially be designated historic, and to expedite demolition reviews for buildings that are not potential candidates for historic preservation.
Counselor Gomez-Moakad.
Yes, so we have been talking recently about triple-deckers as of right in our district. And it came to my attention when we were talking about that, that if we, in order sometimes to build a triple-decker, we have to do a demolition, and that can be delayed. If we, we could be speeding the process and we are identifying which buildings are truly of historic significance, you know. So I feel this is, you know, an important piece that we should discuss. We should accelerate this because sometimes there's quite a long time to go through the demolition process. I understand why, but it was put there for lack of this type of planning. So if we can bring this to land use, I would appreciate it.
Excellent. That item is referred to land use.
Item 4.5 is an order by Counselor Ewan Campan that the Commissioner of Public Works install a water fountain for people and dogs at Nunziato Field.
Excellent. I'm not going to speak on this tonight. I'd like it to go to the Public Works and Public Utilities Committee, and there is a growing petition. So we're going to bring some members of the public to talk about it when it gets to committee.
Item 4.6 is an order by Counselors Burnley and Wilson that the city solicitor advise this council on the city's ability to take steps to combat predatory towing practices by adopting similar legislation as the city of Boston.
Counselor Burnley.
Thank you. Through the journey of interacting with our local businesses, I always learn something new and get a new area of focus to explore. Our state's towing laws and processes are quite obscure. And there has been some effort at the local level to fill in the gaps and to make sure that every community member is aware of their rights and the process by which to submit complaints about potentially illegal or predatory towing, including in the city of Boston. And this is just a first attempt at looking at if Somerville's laws could be enhanced by following what one of our neighbors to the south have done. So with that, I'd like to send this to Legislative Matters, unless Counsel Wilson would like to say anything.
Very well. That item is referred to Legislative Matters.
Item 4.7 is an order by Counselors Burnley and Wilson that the Director of Parking publicize how residents can file complaints related to illegal towing, namely through the Department of Public Utilities Transportation Oversight Division.
Counselor Burnley.
Thank you. This is along the same lines through you, the chair. Just in my little fact-finding mission to figure out what resources were available to constituents who I've spoken with who feel as though their vehicle was improperly towed, through calling around, I found this resource with an extremely long name, but that in theory is a pathway for folks to get restitution for toes that were improperly done. And I would just like to see our city provide more information to residents who may find themselves in that situation, irrespective of any particular companies. Thank you.
Excellent. Did you want that to go to committee? Legislative matter. Okay. That item is referred to...
Yeah, actually, that's more of a traffic and parking.
Yeah, we'll refer this to traffic and parking. Very well.
Item 4.8 is an order by Counselor Burnley that the Director of the Office of Sustainability and Environment work with this council and Green and Open Somerville to consider the creation of an invasive species czar position to spearhead outreach, education, and citywide invasive plant species removal.
Counselor Wilson, Davis, myself would like to sign on. Counselor Penita Neufeld, Counselor Burnley.
Rats. Rats, rats, rats. All we talk about in the city council is rats. And I've had some, through you, Mr. Chair, some very... some very thought-provoking conversations with community members, especially those involved with Green and Open Somerville, about how they have, in some cases, a different view of the rats, but have a very strong opinion about the invasive species that are infecting the community, particularly in private areas, and would like for this city to do more, do more to recruit, especially youth, to get involved with removals, do more to educate residents around what species are invasive and what they do to their gardens or plant life, and do more to bring the community together around making sure that we have a healthy environment. And we have a rat czar, that's great, everyone loves him, shout out to Colin. We got two rat czars, everyone loves them, shout out to Colin, whoever the other one is. And we deserve more czars, that is my pledge. So I would love for this to go to open space. Thank you.
For the record, you can't have two czars in one department. And also, I just want to clarify, in case anyone is wondering, Green and Open Somerville is not an overtly pro-rat organization, in case there's any confusion. Councilor Davis.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I actually have a first just of clarification. So the item here, because I think this is interesting either way, but the item here seems to be specific to invasive plant species removal. Is that the intent? Okay. Because we certainly, we could have another czar for the invasive fauna that are, we've spotted lanternflies, just seems to be making its way here. So, but that's another topic, we'll bring that. The more important point I wanted to make, though, is my good Councilor-at-Large apparently must have forgotten that you can't bring an item like this before this council without having a plastic bag full of invasive species as a prop. We've established these practices over years of hard work, and I demand that they be respected.
Hear, hear. Hear, hear. The gentleman's point is recognized. That item is referred to the Committee on Open Space.
Item 4.10 is an order by Councilors McLaughlin and Strezzo, that the Director of Mobility advertise alternate walking paths to the intersection of Broadway and McGrath Highway.
Councilor McLaughlin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Appropriate to talk about this with crossing guard money being discussed tonight. Since, first of all, the intersection of Broadway and McGrath Highway has always been an issue, and a lot of people who don't live in East Somerville are now discovering it's an issue, because they have to take their kids from the Winter Hill School to the Edgely School, and didn't realize that they have to cross a highway in order to get their kids to school now. So this has always been a problem, one that will be addressed in the very long term. But in the short term, we have this issue where it's very difficult to cross the street. The state and the city do not want to allocate crossing guards there, because it's too dangerous for the crossing guards, because you're basically crossing two major highways. It's a real problem, but there are two other paths that people are not really aware of to get there. There's the overpass on McGrath Highway, which I admit is not a pleasant overpass, it's unsightly, but it gets you across the road. In my favorite way, the way I get to City Hall, the way I leave and come through East Somerville consistently, whether it's walking by bike or by car, is the Gilman Street underpass, which is identified as a neighborway pathway, which for people who don't know, the neighborways are a network of unofficial bike paths and walking paths that people can use to get from one side of the city to the other. And whenever people discuss this issue, I always bring up the neighborways path, because it's my preferred path to get around. And it actually, if you were walking or biking your kids to school, it's going to take you just as long to go this way as it would to go down Broadway, because you're going to have to turn anyways, and this takes you directly to the East Somerville School and very close to the Capuano School. So what I'm asking for is for the city to advertise at the corner of McGrath Highway and Broadway, and publicly, that there are alternate routes to get there. So while we wait impatiently for the next few decades for McGrath Highway to be grounded and for it to become a very nice road instead of a very ugly highway, there are ways to get there. So I would like the city to advertise this. I've already spoken to them about it, so I'd just like to mark this for approval.
Excellent. That item is approved.
Item 4.11 is an order by Councilor McLaughlin, that the Director of Mobility increase signage and visibility of the newly installed rotaries along Pearl Street, Oliver Street, and Glenn Street.
Councilor McLaughlin.
So has anyone heard about these rotaries? Because I've heard all about it for the past few weeks. I've been canvassing the neighborhood, talking to neighbors specifically about it, and very mixed reviews. Everyone from "I hate this, I want it gone immediately," to "this is really a great improvement to the community," to "I just don't understand, like, what do I do when I reach this intersection?" And it's really not that clear sometimes. We have had, there was an unfortunate accident where someone hit one of the rotaries. I've also observed, sitting on the corner of Glenn and Pearl Street, cars trying to get around the rotary, driving onto the sidewalk, things like this that are concerning. And I think, at least for now, some more signage, a little bit of explanation about what people should do when they reach this intersection, and just highlighting that these things are here. That's what I'm asking for right now, especially with the winter coming and the streets are going to be covered in snow. I don't want to see anybody, a car, or a plow hit these things. And I do know, I actually went down Pearl Street today, and the one on Pearl and Glenn has been removed, and it's going to be readjusted, unlike, I guess there's some comments out there that they're gone, they're not gone, they're being readjusted. And I'm willing to give them a chance for now, but I do think, you know, if it continues to be a problem, then we can't just pretend that, if it's causing accidents instead of stopping accidents, then we have to address that. For now, all I'm asking is for some more signage and make it more visible, and maybe have an explanation for what people should do when they approach this. And this one, I would like referred to committee.
Excellent. We'll send this to traffic and parking.
Item 4.12 is an order by Councilor McLaughlin, that the Director of Mobility access loading zone and metered parking at the intersection of Pearl and Cross Streets, and report back to the Ward 1 counselor.
Councilor McLaughlin.
So I love the intersection of Pearl and Cross Street, has a thriving mini-business district now. There's at least five businesses there, that ranges, oh, thank you, there are a variety of things. There's a tattoo shop there, there's a hair salon, there's a florist, there's a golf company there, that I still don't know what's going on there, but it looks cool. But they lost a lot of parking spots due to fire lanes, so there's some of the spots that people were not supposed to ever park in have now been marked and said you can't park there. The city has said that they're not going to remove those, which I explained to my constituents. But they also have a loading zone right in front of the building, which takes up about five spaces, and talking to the businesses, most of them would probably live without the loading zone. And there's also two metered spots there that were added for the businesses that they don't really appreciate. So I would like to send this to committee for discussion. I've also spoken to the city about this. And just trying to come up with a solution where people can have access to these businesses in a neighborhood that is often overlooked for business.
That item is referred to traffic and parking.
And then, Mr. President, I'd like to waive the readings of Items 4.13 to 4.18 and just move for approval. They're all constituent issues.
Excellent. Those items are approved.
So the next item is Item...
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilor Strezzo indicated from the other room that she would like to sign on to the last item that we talked about, yes.
Thank you. Item 6A is a report of the Committee on Finance, meeting on October 24th, 2023.
Councilor Wilson.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. President. Finance Committee met on Tuesday night with all five members present. We covered an expansive 27-item agenda in an ultra-productive 83 minutes. We recommended that you approve tonight three funds creation requests, three transfer requests, 12 prior year invoice payment requests, two Community Preservation Act appropriation requests, and five grant acceptance requests. The lion's share of these items were extremely straightforward, and many of them were explained by staff memos to the satisfaction of the committee. I'll spare you all a recap of all these and just point anyone interested in details to Clerk Potir's excellent notes that captured the meeting extremely well. A few high-level things I do want to flag for folks. We're paying roughly $30,000 for roughly nine months of parking for 80 spots at the Tufts Administration Building. This was not included as an oversight in the initial agreement that we approved earlier, but we're fixing that glitch now. The city's free to use those spots as we please, so there's going to be a discussion involving the Council on Aging. I imagine a number of you had questions about that, so just wanted to point that out. We had a discussion on the city's plans for vaccination clinics for a variety of illnesses. We heard about plans for flu shot clinics, as well as preliminary plans for a COVID booster clinic. Get those COVID booster shots, everyone. We learned a few interesting things as well, notably that COVID boosters are expensive for the city, with the cost per dose of over $100, now that the federal and state governments have washed their hands of, in terms of pain for that, are no longer covering the cost of those. We also heard that RSV vaccines are unfortunately prohibitively expensive, so it's just not practical for us to offer RSV vaccines at any of our clinics. Single payer just really can't get here soon enough. We discussed portable restrooms in the city, and you all should have received an email from our legislative liaison earlier this evening with a map of portable restrooms and the coming Portland loos that Councilor Kelly requested on Tuesday night. We talked about the amount of Community Preservation Act funds the city has invested in the Somerville Museum. Our legislative liaison, again, provided that figure to us in the aforementioned email. It's 1.8 million. So please, everyone, go visit the Somerville Museum, that your tax dollars are doing so much for. And finally, in discussion of his order relating to our police department's receipt of gray key surveillance technology from UASI, Councilor Scott expressed concerns about the lack of oversight of these funds and resources transferred directly into a city department. Councilor Kelly requested a copy of the memorandum of agreement with the city of Boston for the use of the technology, and that MOA is, was also emailed to us earlier today. So with that, I ask that you accept this committee report as submitted. Thanks.
Thank you. Seeing no discussion, that item is approved.
And that puts one item before the council for enrollment and ordainment, Mr. President. That is Item 23-1407, an amendment to Section 2-373 of the Code of Ordinances to establish a vaccine revolving fund.
On the item. Is there any discussion before we vote? Great.
On enrollment, Councilor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Councilor Davis.
Yes.
Councilor Scott.
Yes.
Councilor Strezzo. Councilor Klingon.
Yes.
Councilor Wilson.
Yes.
Councilor Burnley.
Aye.
Councilor Gomez-Moocad.
Yes.
Councilor Kelly.
Yes.
Councilor Pineda, Neufeld.
Yes.
Councilor Ewan Campan.
Yes.
With 10 councilors in favor, none opposed, and one absent, that item is enrolled. You can vote on the next one. On ordainment, Councilor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Councilor Davis.
Yes.
Councilor Scott.
Yes.
Councilor Strezzo.
Yes.
Councilor Klingon.
Yes.
Councilor Wilson.
Yes.
Councilor Burnley.
Aye.
Councilor Gomez-Moocad.
Yes.
Councilor Kelly.
Yes.
Councilor Pineda, Neufeld.
Yes.
Councilor Ewan Campan.
Yes.
With 11 councilors in favor, none opposed, that item is ordained.
I've always wondered, with these revolving funds, is it a physical, like the Lotto thing, that spins around with the money inside?
You're funny.
Next item.
Item 6B is a report of the Committee on Land Use, meeting in joint session with the Planning Board on October 19th, 2023.
Councilor McLaughlin.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Land Use Committee met at that date. All were present except for Councilor Gomez-Moocad, who had a family obligation. I'm going to read the script, because this is a very detailed one and important meeting to discuss compliance with the MBTA Communities Act and potential zoning changes to encourage housing density. So I'll read it off mostly verbatim. So the first item we took up was an item added which would allow a third unit to permit a house for N-triple-deckers building type without any conditions, and to repeal the lot depth, dwelling units per lot, and development benefits requirement. Director Dan Bartman gave a presentation on this item and said the MBTA Communities Act requires the city, and so people are clear, the MBTA Communities Act is the bill, which is basically requiring cities that benefit from the MBTA to add density and zoning to transit. So it requires to permit three dwelling units by right. Mr. Bartman noted that the amendment is primarily based off the Chair McLaughlin's encouragement, that's me, for the planning department to review potential changes that were believed to be valuable to the community. He reviewed the proposed changes related to the residential districts and for semi-detached houses, building types, lot dimensions, and dwelling lots per unit. With these changes, all of the building types will be permitted by right, which is currently needs a special permit, within the setbacks, so they would still have to meet open space requirements and green scores. All of those standards would still apply, but they would also be permitted by right. With no location or criteria, the lots would be permitted to have one principal building back in the backyard cottage, and the houses and triple-deckers along the city would be permitted by right and to be allowed to have three units. That was the basic idea. We had a public hearing on it. There was a number of mixed reviews on it. I'll read just a few of them. Some of them spoke positively, that these changes will ensure that the city is compliant with state law and achieves the goal of making sure there's enough housing for everyone. One urged the planning department to look to allow much larger buildings, especially near the MBTA, where it might be more financially viable to allow more substantial affordable housing to be built. People supported the idea of triple-deckers, but were concerned about the reduction of setbacks. There was support for more housing, but did not want to end up at a situation where everything is packed and with no space in between. Some people were concerned about removing the affordable housing requirement, for which currently we require a third affordable housing unit to be built, if you were to build a third unit. The city pointed out that no units have been built from this over the past few years, but there's concerns about getting rid of this requirement, concerns about expanding green space, and concerned about the affordable housing requirement again. Planning Board member Luke Schuster inquired about the state leaving the door open to communities to apply for consideration for something above the 10% affordability requirement in certain circumstances, and Mr. Bartman responded by saying that it could be something that the city addresses in the future. So that was that item. That item was left in committee. We had an item discussed in our steep slopes amendment, which this council passed a few years ago, which basically requires a special permit for areas that are on a steep slope, which in Somerville is many, many places. The city is proposing to eliminate this requirement altogether, and there was no public comment for or against that. Then we took up what is known as a no more than four rule, which prohibits more than four unrelated people from living in the same apartment together. Andrew Graminsky from the city had the presentation, gave some additional background, and reviewed the proposed amendment. He reminded the committee members to be in compliance with the Act. The city is not allowed to have occupancy requirements in its zoning. So this would be eliminated completely with the MBTA Communities Act. He said that the four unrelated peoples rule hasn't been evenly enforced in the city, and went on to say that the government should not define what a family is. The law, he said, is discriminatory towards low-income and student populations. He noted that the zoning change to repeal four unrelated people rule was supported by the city council and pushed by members in the community. Mr. Graminsky noted that the more equitable way to regulate building occupancy is through the Building and Sanitary Code, so zoning would regulate the number of dwelling units allowed, while Building and Sanitary Codes would regulate the number of people allowed in each unit. We had mostly positive comments from the public, although there were some concerns about ensuring that units are not fully packed, that people aren't living in kitchens and things like this, and that everyone have access to an actual room if this happened. So that was that item. Those were the three big items to come in compliance with the MBTA Communities Act. And then we also took up two items, 635 Somerville Ave, as well as 295, 297 Medford Street, which were citizen petitions for upzoning. Met with mixed reviews, and Councilor Ewan Campan, the president in particular, questioned why we're going through this process of a one-for-one zoning changes when we should be considered the whole city more comprehensively. So all these items were left in committee, and I submit the committee report to be approved.
Thank you very much. Chair McLaughlin, are there questions on that? All right. More to come on these, certainly. That item is approved.
Item 6C is a report of the Committee on Legislative Matters, meeting on October 17th, 2023.
Councilor Davis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Committee on Legislative Matters did meet on October 17th. There were a few items before the committee, two surveillance technology impact reports. These are both items that you've heard about in the past. These were the resubmissions of the initial impact reports. So again, the surveillance technology ordinance, one of the components is a requirement that before technology is used, an impact report is submitted, and that needs to be approved by the council. Another is an annual report that is submitted to show, you know, what that use was. These were both the impact reports for new technology, or in the case of the latter, the gray key, a new acquisition of this technology that we had access to through a different means previously, but otherwise the same technology. In both cases, the administration withdrew the initial reports and submitted revised ones. So as I have every time we've gone through this, I continue to appreciate the collaboration from the administration, the police department, and the traffic and parking, in this case, where the departments that own these two reports. case, where the departments that owned these two, these two reports. The council doesn't own the reports, so we can't amend them. You know, in council, we just have to say, hey, would you please add these details? And they have always been willing to do that, so we continue to improve our transparency on these. And the report, the minutes go through the discussion on these, I don't think I'll go through any more detail, but both were recommended for approval. And then the other substantive item we discussed was a proposed amendment to an ordinance that actually, we've also heard about before. This was an amendment proposed by Councilor Burnley regarding closed captioning accessibility. We had, the committee had previously voted to recommend approval, but with a caveat that if there was any concerns raised, that we'd be happy to send it back to committee. So we did that because there were some additions and clarifications, and actually the clerk's office submitted some revisions to, even though this, the proposed ordinance was almost verbatim from the similar ordinance of Boston, we were able to improve it. And so I thank you to the clerk's office for providing some language improvements, as well as some substantive changes to better clarify the role of the Commission on Disabilities. And so there's a good bit of discussion there. I should note that we were joined by Director Nadkarney from Business Development, and she did express a preference that we not pass the ordinance amendment at this time so that their department would have more time to sort of reach out and communicate with the business community ahead of time. We discussed that, we considered that request, and the committee collectively decided that given that the nature of this ordinance, it's a very simple and very elegant in its simplicity ordinance, it just says if there's a business that has a television screen of some sort that is available to its, to the public, and it has closed captioning, you have to turn it on. But there's no financial penalties, there's no rewards. In fact, the enforcement is really structured to help businesses comply. And so we felt that, you know, unlike something like, for example, a plastic bag ban, or, you know, where it would require inventory planning, and this just didn't seem like the sort of thing that really needs a lot more discussion and time. Certainly no knock on, or, you know, in no way to sort of diminish the views of the administration or, you know, the need to communicate with the business community. We just felt it's such a light-touch ordinance that we should, you know, get it in place, move on. I don't anticipate any businesses having an issue with this. Again, if they don't have, if they, if they don't have the capability for closed captioning, then it doesn't apply. It's not, there's, it's a very light touch. The one other thing we did discuss was, was language. So I should note that the Licensing Commission has actually already put in place guidelines very similar to this. And so this is, in some sense, this is sort of redundant to what the Licensing Commission is doing. This ordinance has a broader scope because it could, it could touch businesses that the Licensing Commission guidance wouldn't apply to. But there was some language in the Licensing Commission guidance that related to the language that closed captioning, you know, could be in, and essentially it said, you know, you can choose, they can choose the language. We had a discussion with that and ultimately decided it's better to remain silent, you know, first off, so that there's no implication that there's any, you know, no reason to think English would be the language, and then we can, you know, allow it to, just, if, closed captioning is closed captioning, and that can be any language and comply with the ordinance, and we thought it better to just leave it simple than trying to get into all the ways of describing what is and isn't allowed and how that would work. Again, keeping it simple so that it makes it easier for businesses to comply and hopefully ultimately allow some folks to follow along, which is the ultimate goal here. So that was recommended for approval. I should, I want to note, I actually want to move to amend the minutes because I either have a, an older draft of the minutes, or maybe there was an oversight, and I didn't pick up on this early, so I apologize. When I looked at this, at the minutes earlier, there was two votes taken. The first was to replace the text of the proposed amendment with the version that the clerk's offices had provided. That passed. That's in the minutes. But the second vote, which is not reflected in the minutes that are before us, was that Councilor Burnley moved to recommend approval of the proposed amendment as amended, and that passed four to one, with four in favor and one absent as well. So I would just ask that the minutes be amended, that, and I can send the words to them.
The, the committee report before the council for approval is the dispositions. The actual narrative of the minutes will be before the committee for approval, so if you want to get in touch with the committee clerk and let them know that, they can probably do it before you even take that vote.
As long as it's clear that when, that, the reason I point this out is, I guess, because we have to either take two votes or three votes tonight. There was a vote taken in committee to recommend approval. That wasn't reflected on the version that I have. So, Madam Clerk, whatever you tell us we need to do is fine. I just wanted to point out that those words weren't there, but that vote was taken in committee to ultimately approve the proposed amendment as amended.
Two votes tonight, and the document is attached to this item, so it is the document before you.
Very good. Thank you. And so with that, I submit the, I request that the minutes be accepted as submitted or not, whatever, however the clerk wants us to do it.
On that item, I see two councilors, Councilor Scott and then Burnley.
Yes, Mr. President. I apologize for not being able to be at this meeting. You know, I have followed the Graykey Surveillance Technology Impact Report very closely. This meeting, I believe, was on 17th of October, and I believe the entire city council received a communication from Digital Fourth expressing ongoing concerns about the Technology Impact Report and the way the technology could be employed by the Somerville Police Department on October 18th, the night after that meeting. So I am personally not supportive of approving that Surveillance Technology Impact Report, so I would humbly request that it be severed so that my vote can be registered. Thank you.
Very well. That is clerk, that is count number 231531.
It can be noted in the minutes, or we can take a roll call vote, whatever the preference is.
Let's sever it and take a roll call vote. No, sorry. Councilor Scott, please correct me.
There are two items related to the Graykey. 231531 is the more recent one that is recommended to be approved.
All right, that item is severed and before us, and we'll take a roll call on it.
On item 23-1531, the Surveillance Technology Impact Report for Graykey Digital Forensics Analysis Tool. Councilor McGlaughlin.
No.
Councilor Davis.
Yes.
Councilor Scott.
No.
Councilor Strezzo.
Yes.
Councilor Klingon.
Yes.
Councilor Wilson.
Yes.
Councilor Burnley.
Nay.
Councilor Gomez-McCord.
Yes.
Councilor Kelly.
Yes.
Councilor Pineda-Nufeld.
Yes.
Councilor Ewan Campan.
Yes.
With eight councilors in favor and three opposed, that item is approved.
All right, and now on the committee report. Oh, sorry, Councilor Burnley, please, my mistake.
Sorry, just don't want to get lost in the shuffle there. Through you, Chair, I just wanted to just briefly touch on the wider issue related to the closed captioning ordinance. I'm really grateful for the continued work of Legislative Matters Committee in looking into this multiple times. It's the first item I've had that's been recommended for approval twice. But, you know, this council has spoken very extensively about the ways in which our city struggles to provide accessibility for all of our residents. But we typically do so in a very polite way, in terms of the difficulties that abound. And I just want to say that inaccessibility is a euphemism we use for structural ableism, in that ableism is built into the very foundations of our community through jagged, neglected sidewalks, lack of awareness about the needs of disabled residents, and policy that is purposely or not exclusionary. Until recently, the city services have not been immune from this, and we've discussed how, in our previous budget cycles, how commission meetings effectively lacked documents in braille upon request because our city effectively did not have readily available a brailer, which we, I believe, has fixed. We've, we had money in the little budget to lease a brailer, and I would definitely be following up on that to make sure that that actually got spent and used for its purposes. But even with our own city council meetings, previously lacked closed captioning because we didn't have a technology that could sustain it. And we understood that we had a responsibility to do more here, and that change can't wait, to borrow a phrase. So I just want to point out that this ordinance is one material step towards ensuring our public spaces are more equitable for all residents, including those who are deaf, hard of hearing, or who have difficulties processing auditory information, and also for people who, who speak multiple languages, who may, are maybe learning and would like more visual cues to follow along as well. This is a very small thing, but it will have an enormous impact for the residents who it helps, and I'm glad we're taking up the vote tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Am I missing anybody else? Okay, on the committee report. That is approved.
And that will put one item before the council for enrollment and ordainment this evening. That is item 23-0076, an amendment to Chapter 8, Article 1 of the Code of Ordinances to add a section regarding closed captioning accessibility. On enrollment, Councilor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Councilor Davis.
Yes.
Councilor Scott.
Yes.
Councilor Strezzo.
Yes.
Councilor Klingon.
Yes.
Councilor Wilson.
Yes.
Councilor Burnley.
Aye.
Councilor Gomez-McCord.
Yes.
Councilor Kelly.
Yes.
Councilor Pineda-Nufeld.
Yes.
Councilor Ewan Campan.
Yes.
With all councilors in favor, that item is enrolled. And on ordainment, Councilor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Councilor Davis.
Yes.
Councilor Scott.
Yes.
Councilor Strezzo.
Yes.
Councilor Klingon.
Yes.
Councilor Wilson.
Yes.
Councilor Burnley.
Aye.
Councilor Gomez-McCord.
Yes.
Councilor Kelly.
Yes.
Councilor Pineda-Nufeld.
Yes.
Councilor Ewan Campan.
Yes.
With all councilors in favor, that item is ordained.
Now we clap. Thank you all very much. Next item, please.
The next item is item 7.1, a request of the mayor requesting ordainment of an amendment to the Code of Ordinances to add Chapter 6, Article 7, to restrict and prohibit new building construction and major renovation projects that are not fossil fuel-free.
Excellent. That item is referred to Legislative Matters.
Mr. President, I'd like to move to wave the readings.
Mr. President, if I may, just on the previous item briefly before we move on. So the item, so that item that was just referred to committee, if I'm able, I'm going to add that to the committee agenda for next Monday. We have a light agenda, and I know there's some, I believe there's some time sensitivity on this one, so since we now have it in committee, so I would encourage folks to take a look at it, particularly members of the committee, for Monday, and we'll, members, I'll make sure that members of the administration are there to, you know, to talk to and answer questions, but I just wanted to flag that since we're already, you know, coming up on the weekend, and that Monday will come up quick, so, thank you.
Councilor Wilson.
Thanks, Mr. President. I'd like to move to wave the readings of items 72, 74 to 76, and 1010, and ask those to be sent to Finance if you see fit.
Those items are referred to Finance.
And that makes the next item, item 7.8, a communication of the mayor conveying the fiscal year 2023 report of Somerville Office of Immigrant Affairs.
Excellent. The administration asked that this be sent to the Committee on Equity so that they can give a presentation to the council on the work that Somerville has been doing. And I approve of that request.
Item 8.1 is an officer's communication from the Planning Board conveying recommendations for item 23-0940.
That item is placed on file with a copy to Land Use. Councilor Burnley.
Hello, 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 from your happy pilot tonight. We have a number of items that I would like to wave the readings of and approve from 9.1 through 9.14, as well as 10.16 to 10.19. If you look in, under your seat, you'll see a number of items related to block parties, marathons, as well as a Halloween block party by one J.T. Scott. Don't know what that's about. I, I may have half a mind to send it to committee, but in the spirit of fairness, I'd like to say thank you all and happy Halloween, and ask that these be approved.
So moved. Councilor Scott.
Mr. President, I would like to formally invite everyone to come to the best street for trick-or-treating in all of Somerville. That's Springfield Street, where we will be blocking the street for trick-or-treating. Thank you.
Next item, please.
Item 9.15 is a public communication from Harvard University conveying its fall 2023 Accountability Report.
That item is placed on file.
Item 9.16 is a public communication from David Thorpe submitting comments regarding Somerville High School Scholarship Foundation.
That item is placed on file. Councilor Klingon.
Could you send that to Finance?
Certainly. That item is referred to Finance. I'll also say I've, I've had one conversation with the administration, I imagine other councilors have as well, and I know that we'll be getting an update shortly.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So placed on file, copy to Finance.
Yes, please.
Item 9.17 is a public communication from Digital Fourth submitting comments regarding item 23-1354, the Surveillance Technology Impact Report for Graykey Digital Forensics Analysis Tool.
That item is placed on file. Does any counselor take issue with us waiving the readings of the next three public comments and reports to place on file? All right, we'll waive the readings of 918 to 920 and place those on file.
Item 10.1 is an order by Councilors McGlaughlin and Klingon that the Director of Parks and Recreation provide additional play and athletic equipment for the outdoor recess area at the Edgerly School.
Councilor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Councilor Wilson would like to sign on, and Burnley and Gomez-McCord.
Thank you, everyone. So these are all just items that the Winter Hill parents, as I mentioned, the Edgerly School is the home of the Winter Hill students at this point, and a lot of impromptu work done there. I am happy to see that. I like what they did with the parking lot, but some Winter Hill parents have asked for more toys, more play activities, and someplace to put them all. So these next three orders are just about enhancing the experience for the Winter Hill students at the Edgerly School. I'd like them all referred to the High School Building Committee, if that's appropriate.
Excellent. This item and the next two are referred to the Committee on School Building, and Councilor Klingon.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to Councilor McGlaughlin. We've been working together, obviously. The Wildcats are in, now in his ward, but I consider that school as displaced in the ward that I still am trying to give those kids an enriching experience. So just to clarify a few of those things that Councilor McGlaughlin said, just to get more into a little bit of detail, is that they're asking for a climbing structure in the main part of the schoolyard. They're, what they're, the kids, what they're doing is, is like building things to climb on by putting the Adirondack chairs on top of each other. And one of the things that the parents conveyed to us was that, you know, they're, they can see from their measly schoolyard, and I know it's temporary, but, you know, the kids are looking over at the East Somerville Schoolyard and all of these goodies and all of these things that are over there, which they do get to go to for some small period of time, some of the kids, the littler kids. But the point is, is that I think we could do more even in the temporary, even for the temporary, and the other, the one other thing that was mentioned about toys, like interactive things to hang on the fences, mainly for the AIM program, for the kids who are, who are in our AIM program, who rely on these different things for stimulation and such that they're just not getting in the bare-bones schoolyard they have right now. And they've done a great job, as Councilor McGlaughlin said, at making it, you know, decent enough to, you know, to passable, but I think for short money, we can do a lot more to enrich the experience for those kids. So thank you to the good counselor from Ward 1 and to the parents for advocating, and that's it.
Thank you. Councilor Gomez-McCord.
Councilor Klingon or Councilor McGlaughlin, can you clarify for me, so item 10.1, are you looking for loose equipment in terms of play and athletic equipment, or you're looking at a play structure?
Through you, Mr. President, I think when they go to committee, I think that'll be discussed. I think there'll be input from parents. So I think that if they, when they go to the High School Buildings Committee, that can be addressed there as the specifics.
Can I then make a friendly amendment? It should be Parks and Recreation and Parks and Urban Forestry. Because if it's a play structure, they will be the ones dealing there. So could we add that, just so they are present at the meeting?
No. Sure, why not?
Roll call. Great. Did you get that amendment? As amended, those items are approved with a copy to the Committee on School Buildings.
Item 10.4 is an order by Counselor Klingon that the Director of Engineering provide this council with an update on the 2013 pedestrian accessibility study and the progress made in the 10 years since its release.
Counselor Klingon.
Thank you, Mr. President, through you. You know, as we've heard tonight, we do everything from compensation studies to these other variety of different analyses and studies that are supposed to inform us moving into the future. This was a study that was commissioned by the previous administration in 2013, basically doing an audit of all of the sidewalk ramps. And they used GIS technology, and there's a whole, I actually attached it to the agenda. It may, if you all want to take a look. It was done in 2013, it's been 10 years. I'd like to just get an update on where we are and whether or not we've been tracking this and actually, you know, utilizing this study that we paid money for. So I would like that to go to Equity, Gender, and Families.
Excellent, that item Counselor Scott would like to sign on, Counselor Burnley would like to sign on. Do you want to speak? Absolutely. That item is referred to the Committee on Equity.
Item 10.5 is an order by Counselor Klingon that the Director of the Office of Racial and Social Justice update this council on the implementation of the Filevine system that was procured to track Americans with Disabilities Act complaints.
Counselor Klingon.
Thank you, Mr. President, through you. This was in response to an order that was put in about a year ago, about 12, actually, yeah, October of last year. And it went to committee and was discussed. The order that I put in was to ask, you know, how many ADA complaints have we got and how are we tracking them? Seeing as though in the olden days, we had Nancy Selamoon, who essentially was great, but essentially was like, I think she just helped us get a system of equipment, adaptive equipment to people. We now have an entire department with an entire, a full position for ADA compliance. And so when this, when I put in that request, the answer from that coordinator or director of ADA was that they are working on a system, and I think that's great. And I just wanted to bring that back up for discussion and see where we are in that tracking system. So I'd like that also to be sent to Equity.
Counselors Burnley and Gomez-Moakad are signed on, Counselor Scott. And that item is referred to the Committee on Equity. Counselor Gomez-Moakad.
Can I backtrack on an order, another order? I want to make, 10.3, I wanted to make another friendly amendment, sorry.
Very well.
That should be, again, capital projects should be, it should be inspectional services and capital projects because they would make the modification, so.
Any issues? As amended, great.
Item 10.6 is an order by Counselor Klingon that the Director of the Office of Racial and Social Justice update this council on the status of the procurement of a Braille embosser to accommodate requests for materials in Braille.
Counselors Burnley and Scott would like to sign on, Counselor Klingon.
Thank you, Mr. President, through you. I'll be brief, just, I mean, as you can see, there's confusion amongst us at this horseshoe, seeing as though Counselor Burnley literally just said he wasn't sure where we stood with that, even though we all agreed to and passed a funding request for a Braille embosser, which we were told at some point, well, at least I heard, that the grapevine that it had been purchased. So really just want to kind of get an update on where we are with that and know how we can best use that. One of the requests I've put in was even at the very least, for these meetings, our main council meetings, which are in-person, these are the only meetings in person we're having right now as a council, that they could, we could have the agenda put in. I know there's complications. I've spoken to the clerk about that regarding, you know, supplemental items and late items. So it wouldn't be the exact, but we'd still be able to have something on site if we could get it, get together with the administration to use this embosser and be able to provide materials to folks in Braille. So that's, like, I'd also like that to go to Equity Committee. And if you wouldn't mind, if you'd indulge me, I would like to sponsor, if it's okay with colleagues, on the basis of these three orders, from the advocacy from my constituent in Ward 4 and parent of a child who was disabled, to speak, if everyone will mind. Everybody knows Holly Simeoni.
Certainly. Ms. Simeoni, please.
Yeah, just a brief statement in general terms about the state of affairs.
Welcome.
Hi, thank you. I did a silent clap for the closed captioning ordinance. Thank you very much, appreciate that. And I agree with what you said, Counselor Davis. It's about the opportunity not to be able to have that technology available. It's not about punishing someone for not understanding to turn it on or deciding what language it should be in. It's more of a, like you said, it's a light touch, but it's a really important one, so thank you. As I was sitting there, hearing you talk about the embosser, and we've talked a lot about Equity, and you asked about having embossed agendas here at certain things. And we are now a hybrid monthly meeting, one of the, I guess, the second commission that's doing that, which is exciting. Part of having things embossed is the formatting, and it's a really big task. Myself, my co-chair, and another member of our commission are actually using an at-home Braille embosser that they revived, that's several centuries old. And they're able to, on a screen, see how it would emboss. It saves a lot of money, it saves a lot of time. It also means you don't get a stack like this of embossed materials, you get this. You also don't spend more money at Perkins embossing all of that or the time treating it. So I know it's not included here, but considering best use of using an embosser and person who's receiving those materials, looking into how we can real simply follow a format in a lot of things that we do. In no way changing, you know, what this is, but simply punctuation and headings, things that are somewhat hidden can really make a difference. So thanks, Jesse. I don't know where that fits in, but that would really help us all.
Through, Mr. President, now that was perfect, and thank you, you know, for your advocacy. It's always appreciated.
Thank you. And thank you, Counselor Klingon. Next item, please.
Item 10.7 is an order by Counselor Klingon that the Director of Mobility add a speed bump to Shore Drive at Governor Winthrop Road.
Counselor Klingon, Counselor Wilson would like to sign on.
Thank you, Mr. President, through traffic and parking.
Right, that item is referred to traffic and parking.
Item 10.8 is a zoning ordinance by Counselor Pineda-Nufeld amending Section 7.2.7 to add a shared workspace and arts education to Table 7.2.7 permitted uses.
Counselor Pineda-Nufeld.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is, the Colla Building, which is Old Potterhouse School in my district, has its own special snowflake zoning. And there's a tenant, a claywork studio, who is looking to move in to one of the commercial spots that has been vacant for many, many, many years, and hoping in the future potentially to host workshops, other mentoring opportunities for those who want to learn about clayworks. And so I'd like this to be referred to Land Use with a copy sent to the Planning Board.
Excellent. That item is referred to Land Use with a copy to the Planning Board.
Item 10.9 is a resolution by Counselor Burnley that the administration increase the $55,000 allotted to support food access to $100,000 in accordance with its promise to pledge $1 million for participatory budgeting.
Counselor Burnley.
Thank you, thank you, and congratulations, City of Somerville. We have just concluded our first participatory budgeting process with five winners chosen. And oddly, the subtotal came out to $950,000. We promised to give $1 million to our community, and the item on there that had the lowest amount of funding was direct food access supports. And so this is just, I don't, I don't know if there was any strategic thinking behind that from the administration. If there is, happy to hear it. And would like for this to be taken to, let's say, Equity. It could be Equity, or, let's say Equity, let's just say Equity. But I would request that the administration give out the full $1 million that we pledged publicly that we would do for our residents. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would you like that sent to committee? Equity, excuse me.
Item 10.11.
Mr. President, I'd like to wave the readings of 10.11 through 10.14 and send them to the Confirmation of Appointments Committee, please.
So referred.
Item 10.15 is an officer's communication from the Chief of Police conveying supplemental information regarding Somerville's participation in the Metro Boston Homeland Security region.
Colleagues, is this an item that should go to committee?
Through the President, no. This was the MOA that we requested in Finance Committee regarding Gray Key. So just a quick synopsis. We had a discussion during Tuesday night's Finance Committee meeting regarding Gray Key because through the process of going through the impact report, we came to the conclusion, we came to the realization that the administration was able to accept Gray Key without having any sort of no-funding grant agreement because UASI, which is the Urban Area Security Initiative, which is based out of the Office of Emergency Management in Boston, they give us Gray Key for free. It costs about $34,000 a year. But, you know, there's an agreement that we have to sign with UASI and with OEM in order to have access to this technology. And so this is the generalized MOA that we sign with UASI. You know, I think this is the information that I had requested. So I feel fine just placing this on file. That said, it's pretty standard. There's nothing explicit about Gray Key, which, not to be paranoid, but I do feel like there's probably some explicit agreement when it comes to Gray Key and us having this technology that we sign with OEM or with UASI. So all but to say, I'm happy to just place this on file. This is the information that I requested, that I wanted to make sure was public. But I do think the council's going to have to continue to dig in on these types of no-funding, no-grant approval types of technologies that were given from all the different security apparatuses, police departments, et cetera, that operate within the greater Boston region.
Very well, thank you. That's very helpful for folks who aren't on that committee. Counselor Scott.
Yeah, thank you. Again, I appreciate that summary from my colleague at large. And again, we were just trying to understand what the underlying governing documents are of our relationship with UASI, which is the Department of Homeland Security. For people who are confused about this, this is direct Department of Homeland Security programs. And, you know, we, as a council, several years ago, passed ordinances that would, or passed resolutions prohibiting our engagement with the federal government's military surplus programs so that we couldn't accept military surplus armored vehicles or assault rifles that have been used to militarize police departments all over the country. So discovering that this incredibly invasive surveillance technology was something that we had not approved a grant acceptance for and actually had no, no way to touch or even know that this technology was coming into the city except for it being triggered by the surveillance technology ordinance, led me to have some serious questions about how, what else might be coming into the city and what that funding mechanism was. So I appreciate this document, and I think it's an important one for folks in the city to have access to. And I think there are still many unanswered questions. But in terms of the question about what document authorized this particular transaction, I think this, I'm happy to have this placed on file. But I do believe there needs to be more discussion in the coming years. Thank you.
Thank you. That item is placed on file.
Item 10.20 is a public communication from Charles Zamudo requesting the adoption of an amendment to the Zoning Ordinance MAP to change the zoning district of 563 to 565 Broadway from urban residence to mid-rise 4.
That item is referred to Land Use with a copy to the Planning Board.
And that brings us to the end of our agenda for the evening, Mr. President. And I'll remind the council that item 3.1 remains late on the table.
Counselor Scott, any update on that grant of location on your end?
You know, so I don't have any grant of location or trench permit for the work that has been done. I do have several photos that I have provided to the clerk of the trench across the sidewalk, as well as a photo of the work being blocked off by sawhorses and cones forcing a Somerville resident in a walker to walk in the street around it. The engineering can't find any permit approving this. So we have a lot of investigation to do on what exactly is going on in 205 Beacon. I would recommend that this be sent to committee, and we'll find out.
All right, this is item 3.1, and that is referred to license and permits.
And that brings us to the end of our agenda for the evening, Mr. President.
Are there late items?
There are no further items before the council.
Excellent, thank you all. Counselor Gomez-Moakad.
Sorry, I want to make a quick announcement. Armory this Sunday will be hosting Fabiola Mendez. She's a quadra player from Puerto Rico. And she will also be showing her documentary called Negrura, which is an audiovisual storytelling experience that showcases the story of Afro-Latine folks from Boston's Latin Quarter District. The film aims to create spaces for conversations about colorism, identity blackness, discrimination, and racism within our Afro-Caribbean and Afro-Latine community. Music is at the core of the project, but I have some little cards. I invite you to see this. I think it's a very important subject to talk about and the anti-blackness discrimination within the Caribbean community. It's another layer, lots to learn from that. I know my sister does a ton of research and her own films talk about this. So if you have the time, I invite you to join us. Thank you. And the Armory is one of our great assets, and tickets are super cheap, so please join us. Thank you.
Thank you. We are adjourned. Have a good one, everybody.